All right, good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the May 22, 2023 council meeting to order. And Jenny, will you please call? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I wasn't here for that, I'm sorry. Well, we're reconvening after executive session, the 2022 council meeting. So would you please lead the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Reiner? Right. This evening, we're going to have a special presentation from the Columbus Metropolitan Library. And Vice Mayor DeRosa will be presenting a proclamation celebrating the Columbus Metropolitan Library's 150th anniversary.
So, thank you, Jane, and good evening, everybody, on this absolutely fabulous day. This is just really a wonderful opportunity this evening that we have to say thank you and congratulate our amazing library system and celebrate 150 years. Time flies. Like almost every library in the United States, the libraries in Columbus and Dublin had some pretty humble beginnings. The first Columbus library opened in City Hall, the Columbus City Hall, in 1873. And Dublin's first library, I would say, most of us would have called that a modest structure, was dedicated in 1971 by the then-governor of Ohio, John Gilligan, opening, of course, on St. Patrick's Day. Just for reference, I thought it was fun as we're getting ready to have the memorial. The opening of that library was just the year before the 3,900 acres of Muirfield Village was annexed into the city of Dublin, and the construction began on the Dublin Village Golf Course. And two years before, we had a high school in Dublin. So, but from humble beginnings, the mission took momentum, and we have, of course, a second library, and then today's fabulous, vibrant, always buzzing library. There's obviously lots and lots of people that we could and should thank for 150 years of service to this community. And we're very fortunate tonight to have with us the CEO of the Columbus Metropolitan Library System, Mr. Pat Lozinski, and our very own Dublin Library Branch Manager, Joe Yersovich. So we're delighted to have you here with us this evening. And I know you're going to give us an update, but before we do that, maybe I could ask you to join me in the center of the room. Thank you. So while I'm making my way down here, I also wanted to take an opportunity because, in addition to the wonderful things that these gentlemen and their colleagues have done for the city and for the community, what you may not know is just their involvement on the national and on the global stage. So I want to thank you. They have been advocating and working hard on really important issues for the entire country, and that are things like making sure we have digital literacy for people of all ages, sitting across the table with publishers, making sure we had eBooks that we can afford and have access, and your unwavering commitment to making sure that kids are kindergarten-ready through the work. So I wanted to thank you for that. And so with that, I'm going to read a proclamation council's very pleased to present to you tonight. So whereas, the Columbus Metropolitan Library was founded in 1873, opening with a collection of 1,500 books on the first floor of the old Columbus City Hall on a site where the Ohio Theater is now located. And whereas, in 1907, a new library building at 96 South Grant Avenue, built primarily with funds donated by Mr. Andrew Carnegie, was dedicated. And whereas, the Columbus Library System now encompasses 23 locations, including one of the busiest branches in the network, Dublin, located at 75 High Street. Whereas, today's library collection has grown a little bit from that 1,500 to approximately 2.6 million books, eBooks, audiobooks, music CDs, DVDs, digital downloads, magazines, newspapers, maps, sheet music, and a total circulation of 12.3 million items are loaned annually throughout the system to over 600,000 cardholders. And whereas, the Columbus Metropolitan Library's purpose is to inspire reading, share resources, and connect people with a vision of being a thriving community where wisdom prevails. Whereas, in addition to the materials it circulates, the library serves as a gathering spot, opening a multiple of services, offering a multiple of services, including English as a second language, career coaching, access to computers and Wi-Fi, kindergarten readiness, citizenship training, training in digital skills, summer reading, and much, much more. Whereas, the Columbus Metropolitan Library has been recognized as the nation's top library by Henin American Public Library System Ratings, not once, but three times, was named Library Journal, Library of the Year by Library Journal in 2010, and in 2011 was awarded the nation's highest library honor, the National Medal for Museum and Library Services for its extraordinary civic, education, economic, environmental, and social contributions by the Museum Institute of Museum and Library Services. And whereas, we're about done, gentlemen. And whereas, the library is celebrating its sesquicentennial in 2023 with a year of special events, including an author series, a book festival, Passport Program, Partner Days, and opening a new branch in Gehanna. Therefore, I, Kathy DeRosa, Vice Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Mayor Fox and all of City Council, do hereby recognize the Columbus Metropolitan Library on the 150 years of opening up a world of imagination, learning, and escape through books and other offerings, and extend our sincerest thank you and congratulations on this milestone. Sign this 22nd of May, date of May 2023. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks to Vice Mayor DeRosa. That concludes my remarks for the Columbus Metropolitan Library. We are most grateful, and when you extend your congratulations to us, it is right back at the community because this library is what it is today because of the support we receive throughout the community and the record usage that we receive. And this is a city, and Dublin is, like all of the cities in the community, that loves its library system, and we're most appreciative of the support that we receive. We are taking this time during our sesquicentennial, the spelling B will be a little bit later on that word, to, in a post-COVID era as well, to come out and just check in with the 10 school districts that we serve, as well as the suburban communities that, where we have a presence. And it's really just to remind folks what we're doing, what we've done during the pandemic, and just to make sure people understand some of the things that we're doing that extend beyond the traditional services of the library. Vice Mayor DeRosa mentioned that 1873 was our founding. Just reflect on that for a moment. Before the airplane, before the automobile, before the light bulb, and I heard this morning on NPR, before blue jeans, which were invented 150 years ago this month. But it was eight years after the Civil War. Why is that significant? Because at that time, many library systems were actually forming segregated libraries, but never in Columbus. The founding charter talks about the library being available to everyone in the community. And we believe it was so foundational to the library that when the main library opened in 1907, they carved open to all, literally in stone, over the front door. And I think it really is a reminder to all of us of what public libraries stand for and really what goes into the value system of Joe and his team when they're serving your community. I'm going to give you a little bit of information about where we're headed, but Joe wants to make a few remarks to give you an update about your local branch. And I know you all know Joe as our branch manager here in Dublin, does a wonderful job, so please welcome Joe.
Well, thank you all. Thank you, Vice Mayor DeRosa, for that history lesson. You included just about everything. I'll try to fill in a few blanks. So March 17, 1971, it was the portable library that was delivered to the site that the current library is on now. It took two days. There was a snowstorm and several flat tires as it made its trip across 161 from Gehanna. So since then, in 1980, was the first brick-and-mortar building, and then there was a renovation in 1990. And then, of course, the fantastic building we have today opened June 6, 2019. So let me get my glasses so I can read some of my statistics, because I can't remember my numbers. So last year, we welcomed over 348,000 customers to the Dublin branch, which was the highest number of user visits for any branch across Columbus Metropolitan Library System, second only to our main library. This year already, we've issued over 4,000 new library cards and held over 1,000 School Help and Reading Buddy sessions to students, and we've already seen over 144,000 customer visits. And there's a map included in your packet that shows where all those customers come from, not just in Dublin, but from throughout the city. We recently added some play-to-learn elements to our children's area. That's helping to encourage child-led, play-based learning. This was made possible from a generous donation from the Dublin Community Foundation and from individual Dublin donors. Coming up next, of course, we have our annual summer event, our Summer Reading Challenge, which is aimed at, for kids, teens, and adults. And that helps fight the learning loss over the summer that the students face. We're also very excited about this September. So we're going to host a New Americans Book Fair on September 23, which will showcase and celebrate the works of global and local authors in the new American and immigrant community. So this event is in partnership with the New Americans Magazine, along with the City of Dublin's own Community Inclusion Advisory Committee. So we're very excited about the opportunity to provide inclusive opportunities here in Dublin and to help celebrate the diverse community we serve. So with that, I'll get back to Pat.
Great, thanks, Joe. Make sure you have that. A couple of other things about the sesquicentennial. July 15 and 16 will be the first-ever Columbus Book Festival. We purposefully branded it as Columbus and not Columbus Metropolitan Library. We have all the Central Ohio libraries involved. We have all the Central Library, Central Ohio bookstores involved. We have 135 authors coming from all over the country. It'll be the first time that the City of Columbus allows Topiary Park to be used for a festival. So think of the Arts Festival for books. It's the library foundation's gift to the community, and given the traction that we're getting, it could become an annual event for us. We also have a Passport Program that is encouraging people to visit libraries throughout. And this is the map that I think Joe shared in the packet. That actually shows the home address, these dots of people who visit the Dublin library. And that pattern repeats itself over and over again throughout our community. And you see people as far away as Canal Winchester. And of course, we didn't, we only did Franklin County. So we know we have many Delaware County users who use the library as well. On the right-hand side of the packet that we provided to you, just very high-level pages, 1 and 2, talk about the work that we do to try to support students in the out-of-school time, which we define as preschool, after-school, weekends, and summer. You also see the services that we provide for teachers that you can look at on your leisure. And then, digital and social service help are on pages 3 and 4. I want to specifically, however, draw your attention to the last page, which looks like this, and that is a product called LinkedIn Learning. And I'm drawing your attention to it because I think it's something that could be used by, for training for the city of Dublin as well as residents. It's 17,000 high-quality adult training videos on a vast number of subjects. It is absolutely free with your library card, but our contract with the vendor prohibits us from marketing it in print to other entities. But it is a wonderful service, and I think if you look at the training needs of your workforce, I think there will be some tools that will be helpful, so I just encourage you to take a look at that. In closing, I want to tell you that we're working on a letter of intent with the City of Columbus for a new branch library and the sheep farm, Case Road. And I know that's technically, well, not technically, it's not in the city of Dublin, but it is in the Dublin School District. The building would actually be in the district, so obviously that would affect Dublin residents. And so we want to make sure that you know that we are working on that. Hopefully, we have that wrapped up sometime within the next several months. And we don't really have a timetable yet because it's dependent upon when they will develop the park area as well. And then lastly, to let you know that the library board will be considering levy, operating levy for the library. The last one was in 2010, so it was 13 years ago. And at that time, the library said they would make it at least 10 years, so we've gone 13 years. And I think originally, the thought was to get to 2024, but as we talked to other county entities, it looks like there's going to be a crowded ballot in 2024. So we've been advised to try to go a year early. So no decision yet, but I want to give you a heads-up that that's something that they're considering. And obviously, as we talked to the Dublin schools already and others, we're making sure they know of that because at some point, it's important for all of us to understand those timetables. Again, thank you for the proclamation, thank you for the time, thank you for the successful library that we've all put together. If we hear one complaint, consistency is, why did you build it so small? So that's a good problem for us to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Were there any questions or?
No, were there any questions? No, thank you very much. We have another special presentation this week is Public Works Week. So we have a proclamation, and I'd like John Milligan, Tyrone Reggins, and Nick Lucas and Michael Harriet to come forward. Hello, everybody. So it's Public Works Week, and we just want to give you a proclamation because we're so thankful that you're here to help us and the whole staff when it comes to taking care of the city and doing the public works that everybody appreciates. So we have a proclamation with a few wherashes. So public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities and to our public health, our high quality of life, and our well-being here with the people of the city of Dublin. And whereas, public work professionals provide essential services, including snow and ice removal. We really appreciate that. Curbicide chipper, mosquito management, leaf collection, and solid waste remover removal. And whereas, public works professionals provide essential services. It was written on here twice, so you do a double, extra great job. Whereas, in the year of 2023, it marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association theme, Connecting the World. And it is a tribute to public works employees like yourselves, who have made a commitment to our community. And whereas, the City of Dublin is a nationally accredited public works agency, including the staff of engineering, asset management, and quality assurance, transportation and mobility, facilities and fleet management, and public service who demonstrate every day their commitment to service. So therefore, I, Jane Fox, on behalf of Dublin City Council, we do hereby proclaim May 21 through the 27 of 2023 as Public Works Week in the City of Dublin, and we call upon all of our citizens to recognize you and all the contributions that the public work professionals like yourselves make every day to our health, our safety, our comfort, and our quality of life. So congratulations. Okay, they want me in the middle. All right. Next on our agenda is citizen comments. And this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. So Lindsay, do we have any comments?
Nothing submitted online.
All right. Is there anyone present here who wishes to make a comment or have any comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Counsel, is there a request to remove any item this evening from the consent agenda?
All right.
Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, please go ahead.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Our second meeting this evening on public ordinance 13-23.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to 3B Medical, Inc. to induce it to lease a facility to locate and expand its office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
All right, this evening, Kirby Duruth, our Economic Development Administrator, will give us a staff report. Good evening, Kirby.
Good evening, mayors and members of council. There have been no changes to the document before you since its previous reading, and staff is still recommending approval. Brian Palmer, Executive Vice President of Supply Chain and Manufacturing for React Health, has joined via Webex. He has a few words that he'd like to share and is available for questions as well.
All right, do we have any public comment on this? No, all right. Counsel, questions? None? All right, we will vote on the ordinance. Oh, he says online, all right, I'm sorry. Yes, we welcome you. Please give us your comments.
Good evening. Thank you for taking time to hear my comments. Just wanted to introduce myself, as Kirby mentioned, Executive Vice President of Supply Chain. I have worked in the medical device industry for 20 years at both Philips Healthcare and Drive de Vilbes Healthcare as the Vice President of the Respiratory Division before joining 3B Medical. I have personally lived in Dublin for the last three years, and my daughter has attended Bali and now Griselle, so I know Dublin pretty well. I started with 3B Medical about 15 months ago. Since then, we have grown nationally from about 35 employees to about 400 now. So we've had some very... So we've had some, some very, very rapid growth through acquisition. We've acquired a number of companies, including if anyone is familiar with Invacare, that is located up in Cleveland, Elyria, Ohio area. We acquired their respiratory business about three months ago. So I've, you know, I've lived in Westerville, I've lived in New Albany, and I have to say that, you know, I'm very impressed with Dublin. They have great amenities for families with the pools, the zoo, the maintenance and the infrastructure is, is amazing. I live right off of Dublin Road, which was resurfaced just two weeks ago, and the, and the road is beautiful. You know, so we're looking for a site to house associates, office associates and engineers for product development. We are looking to develop sleep and respiratory products in this office. And we're starting with about 10 full-time associates from all over the city, Hilliard, Grove City, Dublin. And, and then we're looking to grow that certainly over the years to come. So, you know, definitely Dublin has great amenities with restaurants, shopping, access to highways would make Dublin a, a great, a great location for an office. And so I ask you to approve this tax incentive so I can, you know, help the company and the community continue to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. We appreciate that. We're really looking forward to having you here in the city. Do we have any questions for him or comments? Well, it looks like we're going to call a vote here, so we will do that. And when we finish that vote, we will congratulate you. So may I have a vote? Would you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer, welcome to the City of Dublin.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Have a good evening. Next on our agenda is our first reading, introduction of ordinance 14-23.
Adopting the proposed tax budget for fiscal year 2024.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report this evening is our budget manager, Megan Murray. Megan?
Good evening, counsel. This tax budget is an administrative requirement under the Ohio Revised Code and needs to be adopted and effective by July 20th. So we brought it to you today with our recommendation to pass it on June 12th, making it effective July 12th. Again, this is an annual administrative requirement of the O R C, and this fulfills that requirement so that we will be in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Counsel, questions for Megan? Hearing none? All right. Second reading on this will be on June 12th. Thank you, Megan. Introduction on Resolution 40-23.
Waiving competitive bidding requirements pursuant to Section 804 Contracting Procedures, Paragraph C, waiving of competitive bidding of the revised charter for the provider of tents, tables and chairs for the 2023 Independence Day Celebration and Dublin Irish Festival.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening is from our community events director, Allison Leroy. Hi, Allison.
Good evening, members of council. I have before you a resolution to waive the bidding for our tables, tents, chairs for both the Independence Day and the Irish Festival. The Independence Day is only around $25,000. So that wouldn't necessarily be needed, but we decided to bring those two together because the Irish Festival is around $245,000. It is a dynamic pricing, so right now we know the price for an average 20 by 40 tents, but that, that number will change, not the price of the tents, but the number of tents we have will change up and really sometimes up until the week of the festival, depending on what's happening with our vendors. But we do expect right now, based on the amount that we have asked for, that we will stay in that budgeted amount. We did go out and talk to multiple companies. We're lucky to have a family-based company here in central Ohio because the only one that we found that had the equipment that we could even, that could actually even supply the Irish Festival was in Chicago. And when we talked to them, they were kind of saying, we could match the price, but then we would have to charge you thousands extra to truck it down to central Ohio, and we would have to have our staff stay in town. For example, the Irish Festival, I think most of you know, the tents take a couple weeks to set up and then another week or so to tear down. So I, I think sometimes that's the cost difference when you have somebody from out of town because they would have to house their employees here for multiple weeks. So we have found multiple times that we couldn't find anybody who would even give us just even a bid on the, the full amount because they knew right from the bat that there's no way they could even match what we were getting. And I can answer any questions you might have on that.
All right. Thank you. Public comment? No questions from counsel? Chris?
So Allison, I'm, I'm wondering why it is that we want to waive the competitive bidding. I understand that the tents are complicated and, you know, that other entities that might be interested in the work would have some travel costs and so on and so forth associated with that. But we bid out projects very frequently that we only get, ever get one bid on. So I don't understand, if you can help explain why we would waive competitive bidding. I mean, if we put it out to bid and, and they are the only bid that we get, you know, that, that is not unfamiliar territory for us. But at least we have been good stewards of the public dollar and have put it out there as an availability for any individual to bid.
I think at this point, we did try to find some others and we kind of ran out of time to get the bid publicized and get the bids in. None of these companies we talked to have ever registered for bidding to, so that takes a little bit of time to get them in. So it's one of the things we, since we waived it last year, we probably should have gotten ahead of it to think about how, bidding it out this year, but we, we didn't get it in time.
And I would like to add, the majority of the competitively bidding or competitive bidding steps or process was covered with the exception of the legal ad that goes in the paper at the very beginning. And as Allison mentioned, for the sake of time this year, but we will absolutely competitively bid it next year, following all steps of the legal process that's outlined in the code and the charter.
That'd be great if we can get that timeline together and make sure that we reach the benchmarks. I, you know, I, there's other events that happen in the city that are heavy tent users. And I know there's a lot of pressure on the tent system right now, but I certainly wouldn't want to go another year without a competitive bid for this being, you know, a really large expenditure of public funds.
Yep, we can do that. So Allison, what was the price tag last year?
The total price ended up being, I think it was, off the top of my head, I think it was like $237 for Irish Festival. So there was just a few tents that we knew we wanted to tweak to make a little bit larger. Part of it is, is we had less vendors last year. So a lot of our tenting is for vendors. We are back to normal levels this year, so we expected that we would be a little bit higher.
So it's basically a flat price, you're saying?
Yeah, they're not charging us anymore. The price they charged us for a chair last year is the price they're charging us for a chair this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, all right. Would you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Resolution 41-23.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the United Steel Workers of America regarding wages, hours and terms and conditions of employment for employees within the Maintenance Worker Fleet Technician One Electrical Worker and Custodial Worker Bargaining Unit.
I'll introduce it.
All right. Our staff report this evening is from Jennifer Miglietti. She is our Human Resources Director. Good evening, Jenny.
Good evening. Resolution 41-23 authorizes the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement for the 2023 through 2025 fiscal years with the United Steel Workers. The new collective bargaining agreement was ratified by the USW members on May 8th and includes four, five revisions to four articles from previous agreements. These details are outlined in the memo to counsel, but they include wage increases for each year of the contract, shift differential rate increase from $1.25 to $1.40 per hour, vacation accrual increase for employees with zero to one years of service from 40 hours to 80 hours, an increase in prescription safety glasses from $175 to $250 per contract, and an increase in the tool allowance from $1,350 to $1,650 per calendar year. No other articles were changed during contract negotiations, and staff recommends that counsel approve Resolution 4123.
Thank you, Jennifer. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, counsel. Do you have any questions for Jennifer this evening? All right. Hearing none. Kathy, did you have something? No? Okay. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. Resolution 42-23.
To extend the micro-mobility demonstration pilot and to permit the operation of low-speed micro-mobility devices on low-speed streets, bike lanes, sidewalks and shared use paths for an additional 12-month period.
I'll introduce it.
All right. This evening, our staff report is from our guru of mobility, J. M. Rayburn.
Thank you, Mayor Fox, and good evening, members of council. So this evening, I wanted to walk through how we did last year with our pilot for micro-mobility. We have our operator, our vendor Bird, who was able to deploy. So I'll talk about what those numbers and how the ridership looked like for last year. I'll talk about operational changes that we were able to undertake during the quote-unquote hibernation period for the Bird scooters. We'll talk about special identification for e, for e-scooter parking, as well as our public education campaign, and think about citywide expansion and then our recommendation. So last year, we, we launched with Bird, an e-pilot, or an e-scooter pilot. It launched on May 1st, and it carried through to the end of the year, into November. We had over 4,200 riders complete trips, in total, 7,000 rides, and those together covered over 17,000 miles traveled by scooters. And the result of that was about two and a half metric tons of CO2 was saved from our, our airways by people using electric scooters rather than driving or other modes of transportation. It's important to note that we saw the most ridership from May through August. In fact, about 75% of the rides occurred during these months. We did see the ridership decrease as fall weather rolled in and perhaps college students returning back to college and other things that nature. As ridership decreased in our market, Bird went into what they call hibernation. So when ridership gets down to a certain point, that's when they discontinue for the winter months and then resume in the, in the springtime. And our hibernation date for us was November 25th of last year. At the October 24th meeting of last year, council was supportive of staff incorporating additional operations, operational parameters into the program. These included restricting Bird scooters from riding in the travel lanes of roadways that have a posted speed limit higher than 25 miles per hour. It also restricted Bird scooters from riding on West Bridge Street between, on West Street and High Street in the Historic District. We required mandatory compliance for scooter parking at bike racks within the Phase One operating zone. We created a special identification for scooter parking in tandem with Communication and Public Information and Bird. And then we focused our educational campaign on workshops for safety messaging and resources on our website and other things and resources for those who are interested in scooting. And we recommended extending the pilot, given some of the changes we wanted to make over the winter time. So on this screen, I'll give you some, I'll walk through some examples of the changes we made. On the left, you'll see a screenshot of an example of a, this is Mirfield Drive. And what you see is the no-ride zone is not curb-to-curb, but it is covering most of the roadway. The reason why it's not curb-to-curb is because the GPS devices do have a little bit of drift, about 17, 18 feet for accuracy. So we created a 20-foot buffer between the sidewalk and shared use paths in order to maintain those restrictions on those roadways, but also allow for riders to use the facilities, whether it's shared use path or sidewalks, without, with minimal interruption. So we think that 20 feet will be appropriate. You see the shared use path is reflected on, in green on this, on this example. And we also made the opportunity for you to cross over restricted roadways. So that's why you see at each intersection, there's a hole in that restriction so people can go across the restricted roadway. On the right, you'll see an example of how we used a designated parking requirement zone. This is an overlay that you have to end your ride at a designated parking spot that is a bike rack most of the time. It can be other places like in pocket parks in the Bridge Street District area. And this is for people, if they want, it's really to prevent clutter, but it's also to help with making sure that you can go to a location where there's a bike rack and you can find a scooter if you need to. And it's also an app that you can look this information up. So the big, the big so what about this is that these were successfully implemented. And in the first two months of operations, we have received zero complaints from the public. So we are encouraged that these changes are successful so far. We do parking compliance audits to make sure that they are being parked correctly. We have not seen, we've seen, I should say, compliance with the scooter parking when we do audit. We do recommend having this green symbol to identify scooter parking for those locations that perhaps people need a little bit more reminder and education of where it's appropriate to park a scooter. We don't anticipate this being everywhere. It's really as needed. We will bring that as a reinforcement to help educate people where they should put their scooters. And we do include a, an e-bike symbol because we are anticipating a BikeSure launch later this year, and those have e-bikes where you can park at bike racks. So really, if this would serve both of those programs for education purposes. So in the event of a non, of a consistent non-compliance, that's when we would use one of these stickers to indicate the parking location. And if it remains compliance, the levels that we see today, then we, they may not even be needed. So it's something to think about. When I think about public, when, when I mention public education, our website had different resources, different opportunities to learn more about scooter safety. These are screenshots from our website. We hosted four scooter safety workshops at the rec center and also at the public library, great partners, which we mentioned earlier. We, we plan to host guided scooter rides that incorporate scooter safety through Bridge Park in historic Dublin. That's where the most restrictions are in place, so it makes sense to have individuals try scooting in those areas, be comfortable with the restrictions and also be aware of what they can expect. This will also allow us to reach topic, people when the topic is top of mind. So particularly in the summer months, that's when we want to have these guided scooter rides to help with safety and encouragement. Based on the data from last year, we, staff will add more guided tours, most likely in July and August. And they'll be featured at the June 23 Mobility Concierge Series, which starts back up this, this next month in June. There was a request to publish a post-pilot survey, and of course, we will do that when the pilot is, is finished. And this survey will help identify preferences for the conditions of scooter use in future operations of micro-mobility devices. So as we think about citywide expansion, there are a few areas that we look to for guidance. The most recent Community Attitude Survey revealed that 90% of respondents agreed that increasing the city's mobility options for all residents should be a medium to high priority. Furthermore, the strategic framework adopted in 20, in 2022 establishes the goal of being the most connected community, and micro-mobility options are a component of that goal. Staff believes that the mandatory parking, as well as education campaign and other efforts have been successful in Phase One of the pilot. All the same rules and conditions of use will be in place for the citywide expansion of the program. And for these reasons, staff recommends expanding the boundary to city limits for phase, for the Phase Two portion of the project. So you may ask, what does that look like? We were able to identify approximately 140 parking locations based on public bike racks, but also other appropriate locations like pocket parks. This will help with educating the public where they should park, but also mitigate any clutter or any obstruction of walkways, those sort of things. Given that we have these designated parking spots, we do anticipate that this will be more of a destination-todestination transportation option. So for example, you can go from the Historic District to different park connections throughout the city. That could be Coffin Park during special events, or it could be Dari Fields, for example, as well, when there's a programming going on. Citywide expansion would also allow connections to special events such as the Irish Festival, the Dublin Irish Festival, and parades such as the Fourth of July Parade and the Evening Celebration. On the subject of events, staff has used scooters at the St. Patrick's Day Parade both last year and this year. They helped with setup and general operations of the parade and event. So we have talked to events and they are parade and event. So we have talked to events, and they are interested in using scooters by staff to help facilitate future setup and events operations, for example, at the Dublin Irish Festival. On the right, you'll see an example of, if you're trying to look for a scooter, how can you do it? It's very easy to find the app. It'll tell you these little bars with the battery life, and it'll tell you where those are, and you can click on them and reserve them, and so on and so forth. So given the operational changes, early success with mandatory parking locations and connections to additional destinations, places, and events, staff recommends that Resolution forty-two twenty-three is adopted, authorizing the micro mobility demonstration pilot to proceed to Phase Two and extend the project for an additional twelve-month period. That's my presentation. Thank you. And I am joined by Representative Caitlin Goodspeed from Bird. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, J.M. Any comments, Lindsey?
No.
Questions for J.M.? Kathy?
So J.M., thank you, and the team for all the work on this. So as it expands, how many more, or how many additional scooters are we gonna have?
So with Phase One, we allowed for an allowance of fifty active scooters. We never hit that. We were really around thirty, thirty-five, for the most part. We would allow up to one-hundred and twenty-five active scooters, but that would be ramped up based on ridership.
So, I mean, it looks like most of the city is actually served by this based on where the parking is. I have to assume that that means that there's connectivity between all of the little peas on there, right? And I know that Muirfield is a little bit of a special cookie as far as this is concerned. It's not super linear. But are there plans to potentially get to sort of the northern parts of the city? Because it's not just Muirfield, right? It's even a little bit north of that in, in Pardon. And I just think of all the kids that, you know, college kids and so on and so forth that could potentially make use of it. So I was curious as to if there were plans to try to figure that out.
Absolutely. We'd like to work with either the Muirfield Association or other partners. If there's bike racks that need to be built, if there's designated parking spots that they have identified, whether it be with businesses or other partners, we certainly want to have those conversations and make sure it's appropriate and it's safe.
So will you, will they be able to have rides in that portion of the city, even without the parking options?
Correct. However, we still have the restrictions for all roadways over twenty-five miles per hour. They will not be allowed to ride in the roadways throughout the city. They would have to use a sidewalk or a shared-use path.
So arguably, our best bike lanes in the city are on Muirfield Drive, north of Brand, right? That's the only place really in the city that we have striped purely dedicated. It's not a shared share row. It is a dedicated space. So are, will they be allowed to operate in those dedicated spaces?
I, I was, I hesitate, but I believe they can. I want to know that there's enough of the buffer. There may be an issue. So that's something I'll have to check with Bird to make sure that's gonna function correctly. If not, we would prefer a safer facility to guide them on.
I just think, you know, that's a, they're, you know, up to, there's a lot of swim team events, you know. I would imagine that there would be a lot of demand for usage in that area, and being that we actually have real bike lanes there. They're so underutilized. You know, I drive up and down that frequently, and there's seldom anybody in those spaces. And I would like to see those spaces be used for transportation on some level. So, and I think you could probably find some partners up there, be it at the country club or at the, those offices there at, at Muirfield Center, that would be willing to help. And thirdly, I had to laugh, if Caitlin Goodspeed, Goodspeed is really her, she found her, her purpose to be the Goodspeed right there in Bird scooters. So thank you. If you could get any answers to that question, those questions, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for the feedback.
And it's my understanding, too, that if they don't park in one of these parking spots, they continue to be charged, correct? So it seems imperative that we have to find some parking spots on that northern end, because otherwise, they're charged overnight if they ride at home or something. So we certainly have to find somewhere they can be parked. And then my, my question actually is, are we working to get more scooters around our events? So during Irish Festival and during Fourth of July, if we can get a larger number of scooters near our parking lots, where people, like on the outskirts, you know, that they could use, I think that would be helpful, if we can foresee getting extra for those events.
Yeah. Excuse me. Caitlin and I discussed this as well. They have, they have an events operations that they can deploy. So for the Irish Festival, we can coordinate with Caitlin and her team to make sure that there's appropriate drop-off and pick-off locations, and then making sure we have enough fleet as well to, to anticipate the crowds.
Yeah, I can hop in here. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just, I could foresee people using scooters, like, from the hotels to get over to the Irish Festival, or from our parking lots or farther out.
Yeah, J.M. and I were actually talking about this this morning. That's an ideal situation for us and exactly how we want to see scooters being used. We actually just partnered with the NFL for the NFL Draft in Kansas City to, to make sure that they had enough scooters so people could use them to get to and from major events that were happening in the city, as opposed to kind of taking their cars. So we're definitely able to coordinate that from an operational perspective, to make sure we have enough of our vehicles there. We also have the ability, and I just wanted to remind you guys, to geofence for events. So say you want people to take scooters to the parade, but you do not want scooters on the parade route, we can work with the city to make sure that the route is blocked off for a temporary period of time. So we're really kind of flexible in that way and eager to work with the city on upcoming events.
I had a question for you, J.M. There are, obviously, we want to see people use these all across the city so that we can get more use and less car use. But there are probably many people who've never used them. So if a neighborhood was having a neighborhood meeting, or if there was a group that wanted to understand and have someone come out and talk to them about how to use them, how to use the app, because not everybody's a teenager or a college kid, is that available? And what, what sorts of things would you like to see incorporated in trying to get the community to understand the use of them and, and all the applications and regulations?
Please, I think that's a great idea to engage particularly an attentive group, if it's an HOA or a community. We will be doing guided tours, as I mentioned, so we'll have sign-ups for people. But if there's another time that works, we're happy to work with that group. And for me, it's all about safety and education. So happy to, to go the extra mile to make sure that the community, if they would like to learn more, we can provide that. Just reach out to me.
One more. Kathy?
I just had one. So J.M., just for clarity, so if somebody does not park in the designated park zone, how does the, how does that fee continue? Or how, how does that billing work, I guess?
So I know you, and Caitlin, feel free to jump in, but to end a ride, you have to take a photo to confirm that you are in the correct location. There are sometimes instances where you may have some GPS issues, and I actually had this in San Diego when I tried the first time, and you just have to reset your Bluetooth. So there's little frequently asked questions and education that we can help coach the community, saying, you know, this is, the expectation is, if you have any problems, try this, and we'll work with you on making it right.
So, yeah, just to add on to that. So when it comes to mandatory parking, if you try to end your ride outside of that specific zone, it will notify you that you are not in the correct spot and show you where you need to go in order to end your ride. And so, like J.M. said, it's gonna be mostly around bike racks, so the, the location will be kind of obvious if you're standing in a certain point. But, yeah, we are doing this to encourage people to park in spaces that we deem to be good spaces for scooters, and hopefully won't run into too many issues of people's rides continuing on because they decided to leave their scooter in a place that wasn't allowed to park.
Yeah, I just want to be clear about how they get charged. So if they just park it there, the meter keeps running, or doesn't? Or does it stop?
That's something I'd have to look into. I believe it would just keep running, and you would eventually be notified. But you get notified right away if you're not parked in the correct space. So what we find is that that usually does work. People want to make sure that, you know, confirmed end ride, you know, stop being charged, you get your receipt. So that's kind of the incentive. It's rare that we see a scooter continue to be charged, because most times, people will find the right spot to do it and end the ride.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote on the resolution.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Resolution forty-three dash twenty-three.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Dublin Springs Park staircase replacement and authorizing the city manager to enter into contract for the project.
Thank you. Our staff report is from Matt Erman, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Evening, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Dublin Springs Park staircase replacement is a situation where we put out, or sought bids last year. We've received no bids, mainly because of the tight window that we were looking for to achieve the project, construction, material availability, and so forth. We did rebid the project again this year. We received one bid from Janko LLC in the amount of one-hundred and forty-six thousand, two-hundred and sixty dollars, which also included an eleven thousand, eight-hundred-dollar alternate for composite decking material. This material is consistent with a number of other boardwalks and pedestrian bridges, and was selected to increase the longevity of the decking. The original estimated cost for the project was one-hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which makes the current bid over that by twenty-two percent. Just to give you a little bit of reference of the location of the project, it's the red dot in the middle of the screen is the top of the staircase at the end of North Riverview Street on the north side of one-sixty-one Bridge. This is a picture of the condition, the need for replacement of this decking material and the structural components underneath. This is a picture of the staircase that comes down actually from Bridge Street down to North Riverview, which we are trying, we want to make sure the decking and the look is consistent with that staircase as well to have congruency down to the park. So with that, staff recommends adoption of Resolution forty-three twenty-three, accepting the lowest and best bid for the Dublin Springs Park staircase replacement by Janko LLC in the amount of one-hundred and forty-six thousand, two-hundred and sixty dollars, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Public comment?
No.
Questions from council?
I have one. It was mentioned that there was a possibility of adding composite decking. You didn't mention it, and I'm kind of curious, you know, if that's something that's still being considered.
That is included in the recommendation, is to use that composite material.
Okay. Then I have one other question. I only know this because we've gone through the whole decking at, at my place. I walk this staircase frequently, and it's a, it can be very damp there, it's sort of underneath the trees, and it does get slippery. And I, and I know that mold grows on the wood decking as it is. The composite decking, I know, has different levels. Some of the decking has a synthetic cap. That's a higher grade of composite decking, which doesn't allow mold to grow, and will not then ruin it or become really slippery. And I only bring this up because I've had a little experience with this. So I'm just kind of curious. I just want, you know, you'll make the decision, I mean, on what kind of the deck of composite it will be. But I do know that that's a very slippery area, and it does tend to grow mold because of the darkness and the dampness there.
Yeah, and that's exactly why we're going with this composite material. We will reconfirm those specifications, review those, and make the right choice for that.
Great, great. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. All right, we will. If there aren't any other questions, then we'll take a vote on the resolution.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Thank you, Matt. Resolution forty-four dash twenty-three.
Adopting the city of Dublin's goals for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll introduce it.
All right. Megan O'Callaghan will give us the staff report.
Good evening, members of council. This resolution is in follow-up to council's April retreat, and is for the adoption of city council's goals for twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. These goal statements were initially discussed by council during the retreat, and then subsequently reviewed by the admin committee and council in a series of meetings. Feedback was gathered at those times, and we have made the changes to the goal statements, capturing those council comments. Council directed staff to bring forward the agreed-upon four goals for adoption, including becoming the most connected community in the U.S., which is the broadband-to-the-home initiative, Phase Three of that project, realize the metro center revitalization vision, strengthen the stewardship and vitality of our Historic District Corps, and then the fourth being develop Dublin's destination-of-choice, next-generation community events vision. Staff does appreciate the time and effort that council put into this important work to establish these goals, and we look forward to proceeding in furtherance of achieving these goals in the next year. And staff recommends adoption of Resolution forty-four dash twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Any public comment, Lindsey?
No.
Counsel? Discussion concerning the goals? Megan's comments?
I, I just have one comment. In light of our work session last week about the Historic District, some of that language under the, and rather than do another resolution to change Number Three, I'm wondering if we should shorten some of that, take some, leave the goal itself the same, but the supplementary language underneath, if we should strike that? Otherwise, we're gonna have to come back again and redo that. I mean, our work session kind of covered the first couple sentences there. So...
Amy, I'm, I'm wondering, because it is in this year, would there be harm in leaving it?
It just sounds like that's something we've already kind of decided. I don't know. It just, to me, I would take some of it out. I don't know, but... Just seems like we kind of had that discussion last week.
I, I, yeah, we did. I, I think it does clarify what we were trying to do with this. That's my only concern about potentially taking it out, because then, I'm not sure it, it illustrates what the aim is. Do you know what I mean? So that, that's my only hesitation for that.
Any other comments?
You know, I, I agree with Kathy. I think that, that this is a very broad goal, and I think it meets many of the things that the community plan in the past has said. I would hate to change it at this point until we get to a place where you want to do some, you know, further definitions of it. But I think that taking it totally out would probably require a lot of explanation without conversation.
I wouldn't suggest taking it totally out. I just, the first couple sentences, or at least maybe this sentence, "Consider a potential preservation district area within the Historic District." Take that sentence out. I just don't want people to think that we're still changing thing, I mean, that it's gonna change again, or that we're still discussing it, when we're not.
Yeah, I think that, that is the one sentence, I think, that we could remove, and it still leaves the substance of what it is we're trying to accomplish if somebody were to read it.
I would just suggest, striking, that consider a potential preservation district area within the historic district. That's my suggestion.
But you would leave the day-to-day management piece, because that was earlier.
Yeah, that's, we haven't talked about that yet.
All right.
So...
All right. That'd be okay, Megan, to do that? That's just, we're removing, "Explore a possible preservation area," correct?
So that's my suggestion. I don't know if everyone agrees.
I agree.
Okay. Let's see. We are at a point to vote on the resolution.
I'll make a motion that we amend the resolution to state the changes as they have been identified. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mayor Fox? Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And we'll take a vote on the resolution.
Yep, I'm getting there. Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
All right. On other business, I will move to remove Ordinance Seven, D dash twenty-two, twenty-two from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Jenny, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
All right. Next on other business, we have a staff report from Matt, again, on the Dublin Community Recreation Center, refresh Phase One.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You will recall, perhaps five years ago, in two thousand and eighteen, the city worked with a design firm to look at elevating the potential for DCRC improvements. In fact, the two hundred, two thousand and eighteen cost study amendment, there was a revenue, any revenue above fifty percent cost recovery was, was to be dedicated to the DCRC refresh and North Pool renovations. And we all know in two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, COVID caused significant drop in the DCRC memberships as, as well as our revenue cost recovery. In two thousand and twenty-two, the city received ARPA funds for a variety of different costs associated with that pandemic. City council obligated three point one million dollars of those funds to the DCRC refresh. And this year, the city has contracted with MSA Design to update the improvement costs and design potential improvement concepts. Staff have been evaluating the, the tasks associated with all of these phased approach. You'll recall in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, one of the two prominent themes emerging from, from that plan was the community's desire to invest in indoor fitness facilities and city council's priority to maintain existing park and recreation amenities. After going through the comprehensive list and updating the estimated cost, the full comprehensive DCRC refresh calls for an additional seventeen million, or seventeen and a half million dollars above the ARPA funds of three point one million. This phased approach will allow for the improvements with the existing funds that we have in place today and additional quest, requests and future capital improvement program budgets. In order for us to gauge the interests of our patrons that frequent the recreation center, we conducted a survey of the phase one improvements and future improvements. One of the most popular results we got was the new fitness equipment to satisfy the needs of the recreation center. This is consistent with the PIR ratings that we found in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as well. So with the refresh of the phase one improvements, we'd like to take an opportunity to replace the existing track floor. The existing track floor has been played, in place since nineteen ninety-six, when the facility opened. The surface is showing wear and permanent blemishes, as you can see by the pictures, picture on the right. And the estimated cost for this project is estimated to be one hundred thousand to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The second project is fitness equipment and outdoor fitness space. There is strong patron desire for this, the newer fitness equipment, focus on more modern cardio, weight equipment and robust interactive features. Outdoor fitness area that to be located in the current bocce ball areas being proposed. In the picture on the right, you can see the red dot indicating the location of that. The outdoor area would be to provide functional fitness, which is a very high trending, training and exercise programming, to provide the performance training space with new revenue opportunities, expanding programs and so forth. The estimated cost for each of these, the indoor and the outdoor projects, is four hundred and seventy-five thousand to five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each. For the outdoor fitness area in your packet, we included just a concept of what this could look like. There are obviously some things that we would need to review further with this, but just to give you an idea of some of the elements that could be used for that outdoor facility, the locker there is, is managed in such a way that the equipment is locked up when it's not in use. So in order to gain access to the full set of equipment, you would have to either be in a, a member of the recreation center, using it during times of it being open, or registering for program participation in that area. With us this evening is Keith Hall and Maria Rosmaren from MSA Design. They have helped us walk through these projects together, providing us with estimated costs. I'm gonna turn it over to Keith to talk through the, the teen area and the senior area.
Thank you. We've looked at two areas outside of what Matt's talked about, and then one is, one of them is the teen area. Upon looking at it, we found a space that was, that's pretty much underutilized and it's undesir, it's an undesirable place to be. You have a great opportunity here to really sort of amp this up and, and, you know, serve the community a little better. And some of the things that we're looking at, and we see as trends in the community is specifically going into other community centers within this community, is esports, but just new decor and amenities that draw the kids in, whether it's just, you know, regular games or whatever. The other thing is, is there is an outdoor area that is underutilized, and we're looking at expanding to it, but you can see from the pictures that it is, it is a little bit out of date. And then the outdoor area is very underutilized. I, you know, we keep hearing that the kids really don't go out there and use it, so this is a great space to capture with, with a potential expansion. So as you see the front area there where the curved wall is and the entry coming in, that's the existing space, and where you see all the tables lined up with the chairs, that's where we propose capturing the space and adding on and throwing the esports use in there. And then other uses, and I think we would sort of test this even a little bit further, but ping pong tables, billiard tables, whatever it may be, could also be in, in this area. And this is just a three-D view, looking in, into it, so you can see it's a, you know, a little bit better, get a little bit better feel for it three dimensionally. And then the decor, you know, hip, branded, place where these kids like to hang out. I envisioned us at some point through design, probably connecting with a, a group of them and sort of talking about the decor we use there and so forth, so they can have input. And then this would just be the esports area. Then the other space is the senior lounge, and there is a tremendous opportunity here to really, really step up the game. Again, a little underutilized, a little bit out of date in the way it looks and everything. You can sort of look through the pictures. You can just look at the pictures, it comes across a little cluttery. The approach would be to sort of clean this up and make it attractive to other users, primarily the, the baby boomers and that sort of thing, so it's not seen as someplace where just older generations come to and, and play cards or whatever those may be, or as we refer to here as traditional senior activities. But more about socialization. Next. And then this is just a three-D view of it. We're proposing a coffee bar in there where, you know, think of your kitchen where you hang out. Everybody hangs out in the kitchen, so they gather around there, maybe it's crock pots or whatever. Still some opportunity for the tables with playing cards and so forth. And then just a nice social area, comfortable, soft area around a fireplace and just a three-D view. The design is based on being a little more hip, a little more hospitable, current trend and design, current trends in design. And that's just another view too. So allowing, you know, a lot of natural light to come into, into the space itself.
So with the estimated total cost for phase one, you can see the, the estimate is at two point three million to two point eight million dollars. That is not equate to the three point one million. This gives us a little bit of headroom with, with bidding, making some alterations, as well as designing for future phases. The money would be available through this, whatever's left over, to be able to apply towards the future phase design components of, of the renovations. So the proposed timeline for this phase one, we're looking at, the indoor track replacement can occur during our annual maintenance shutdown period with no interruption of service other than that. The late spring to early summer of this year, city council review and public open house to share details of the improvements. Summer to early fall, complete construction documents, submit plans for permitting as necessary, advertise in award bid, and then fall of twenty-three, begin renovations and improvements to all of the spaces. So with future phases, we also included that into the, the patron survey to give us a breakdown of what was most important. You can see there, there's the list. I will, I, I need to make sure we are understanding that a lot of these projects that are listed up here will require extensive planning, strategic timing. A lot of these places already are programmed a year out or have reservations for a year out. There are times of the year where, for instance, the pool project could happen during the summertime when the outdoor pools are open. Give us an alternative to be able strategically plan these so that it's not so much of an inconvenient for, for our patrons. So we'll base this on the patron feedback, and we will request projects as part of the capital improvement program going forward. And with that, a series of questions. Do you have any feedback regarding the proposed phase one? Any feedback for the conceptual design of the senior area or the teen area? Or have feedback regarding the planning for future updates to the rec center? Be happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick comment on the, I see we're taking out the bocce ball courts. Were they just not used that much? I mean, they were excellent courts, but they just didn't get enough activity? Is that why?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's no use out there now. We've actually converted it to a quasi-functional fitness area that can be used, but it certainly needs to be upgraded and renovated.
Comment on the senior area? Yeah, just looking at the Arlington Library, and you know, there were stuffed chairs and stuff and the racks of books and papers, sort of made it a neat place probably to hang out. So I don't know if we want to go a little bit in that direction or not, but...
Well, I think there will be some, some books and things like that there that will draw folks in too, but just, you know, more organized and, and everything. So, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Andy?
So when I was at the rec center for the Citizen University, McDaniel Citizen U, pardon me, we toured the, what I thought was a teen esports room. I just remember it said respawn on the wall. Is that different than what's being proposed? Because it looks like that was just done.
That space is being used as a pilot program for us to develop the programming, to install the equipment, test the equipment, make sure that we've got what we need to make sure that it is state-of-the-art. It has proven to be very exciting for a lot of people, a lot of partners wanting to work with us, including all three high schools, Ohio State Potential Programming. There are actually firms out there that will help you get your programming up and running for your community. This is certainly a growing trend for recreation centers now, but we are on the very edge of this. And, you know, there are other recreation centers that are either being designed with esports rooms or have been renovated for esports rooms. But the esports itself requires quite a niche of expertise and understanding of the technology. It's multifaceted. So having that expertise onboard, we are very fortunate to have some very talented people on our staff that, that do this. So, you know, this is one of those things where we were able to launch, and we're about ready to, to get this thing moving forward with the actual programming itself. When we say esports, it's not necessarily just esports. There are a variety of different social media types of uses you can use these rooms for, that kids and teens strive to use them. Podcasts, recordings, all kinds of social and digital media that they can't get to service at home because of the technology gaps. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So relative to the esports, do you think it will be conducive enough to do sort of smaller level esports competitions? Because there's big money in that.
Yes. That is the intent of that. You know, esports, a lot of people criticize it as a recreational activity. I guess I've always been a proponent of, if, if you're gonna try to compete with technology, you're gonna lose. You need to integrate it into your programming. This provides an incredible social opportunity for kids, whether it be virtual or a physical. There are teams that form, there are leagues that they can join, there's a lot of camaraderie in it. So I just think this offers us a brand-new way of reaching the younger members of the community in, in such a way that it expands our programming and really gives them something really important in their lives.
Yeah, I, I agree. I actually know a couple of kids who in high school did, believe it or not, esports tutoring, and they made a fair bit of money doing esports tutoring.
Yeah.
It was really kind of cool and exciting, and these were kids who really didn't, they were kind of introverts. They didn't socialize a whole lot, and this really opened up a completely different world of socialization for them. You know, one of them was my nephew, and it just, like, at first I thought, this is a joke, right? But that's just me being old. But it really was a fantastic experience for them. It's just, it's really pretty cool. So I just, I want to make sure that we do it right, that we get influence from, you know, the teens that are gonna actually be using it, and that it is a multi-functional space in terms of, like you said, for podcasting, tutoring, all those kinds of things that, that teens want to do.
Thank you.
Matt, do you have data on the usage of the teen areas?
The way it is today, it's really hard for us to gauge that with the pandemic. When it, when it came through, if we went back four years ago, I don't know how valid that data is today. If, if we were to look at the last six months per se, you remember two thousand and twenty-one, we were still coming back online. Two thousand and twenty-two, we had some substantial staffing issues to be able to have certain operations open. This year, we are staffed, we're open, and based on the last six months of operation, I think we've had about five hundred kids come through. So that's not a very good daily average, but on the usage as it is operational, you know, it, it certainly needs a lot of room for improvement to attract the kids to be able to come in and do something they want to do.
Is it, is it going to be in the same space there on the first floor as you come in?
Yes. Yes.
You know, I, I guess I'm not, when, when you look at the community feedback, that this was not on the community feedback survey, or it didn't rise to the level of anything that you put on the slide. And, you know, I, I don't know that that's the, the right place for that. You know, that is really a, a great piece of real estate within the rec center. And I think there's probably a lot of other places we could put this, particularly if we wanted to garner some tournaments and, and things like that. You know, it is, it, it's not on the community survey, feedback survey, yet it's the largest expend, single expenditure that we're proposing to do. And so I, you know, I would have a bit of hesitation about that. I, I look, think about that, how that space could be used as a, as a test kitchen, how that could be rented out for, you know, cupcake parties and, you know, all of the kinds of spaces that we seem to be lacking in the community. And it certainly would fit our health and wellness category a lot. You know, would certainly check that box of, you know, we could have healthy cooking demonstrations and, you know, just a lot of different opportunities. And the esports thing, they probably don't want windows, and they probably want it to be as dark as possible. So I, I don't know that that's the right spot for the esports. And, and I would really like us to respond to the community feedback survey that said what the community, what their highest desires were.
I, I had a couple questions in similar vein, is that it would seem to me that if we're gonna renovate these spaces, it would be, it would behoove us to think about multi-use for the spaces instead of a dedicated room for something. So the space I, I know was locked because we didn't have staffing for quite some time, so it went under, unutilized, and I know we've been able to change that. But when I have seen that room in use, it was for income tax prep help and, I mean, there were a lot of functions and activities going on in that room. So I wonder if we're gonna spend this money to renovate, that it isn't a multipurpose room where it can be set up with certain things if you want and then transformed to something else where, where it becomes a multi-use room. Yeah, partly because of location, but partly because it, it seems to me that might be something to think about. And I was struck by the pictures that you had of the senior room were all non-seniors. So, and I voiced this before, I, I don't know why it has to be exclusively a senior lounge. I mean, why isn't it just a lounge? And I do know we have a very active senior group, and, and they could have first use of that room, et cetera. But, I mean, all of your pictures didn't show it as a senior room, they showed it as a youth room, really. So again, if we're gonna take this space and spend this kind of money, I, I think the idea of having multi-use spaces for everybody in the community just makes a whole lot more sense to me than to try to retrofit something in a space, whereas I'm not sure that's, we need to be doing that if we're gonna, and leave it open. I mean, you know, part of that senior space, because as you know, I'm, I'm a frequent flyer over at the rec center, it's also locked and closed. So there's just lots of periods where maybe somebody would be using that, but they're not. So how do we make it open? How do we make it accessible? And how do we make it multi-functional? And I would, I would, if it, my vote would be to, you know, challenge ourselves to do that rather than trying to duplicate some of this. So that, those... So that, those are my two cents. And then there's just some, I think, one final comment, fundamental things like the restrooms need updated and a variety of those things. I didn't see those on this list, and I, we can't ignore that, that, that's a lot of money, and they just really need a, a facelift, too.
Yeah, those are included on a future list as we can strategically go in and, and do those projects without, one, putting one little project here, one little project there, trying to package it together. It's, it's part of the hallway upgrade kind of project list where those restrooms in the main hallways would be renovated. We will be renovating the locker rooms, family changing rooms, and then the pool space. We plan to get to all of it, but, you know, we really need to take a closer look as to when the best time to do that. So certainly we're taking that to heart.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the bones are part of this as, as well as the, you know, thinking differently about how we're using the space instead of just replicating it.
So one of the reasons the teen lounge is, has a little bit more money associated with it is we are expanding it. We're, we're going outside on that deck and we are, we're going to basically remove that outdoor area. We have to get in there, we have to build foundations and so forth and put a roof over it. So that's, that's got a little bit of a uptick to it just because it's not an interior renovation. And I think by expanding it, that's going to make it more multi-use in the long run, too. And I would say that the senior area itself has, it, it will, it will become multi-use because it's designed in such a way, just in terms of its finish level, to be multi-generational. You have the, the bar area there with, you know, everybody can collect around and socialize, the, you know, the tables, same thing, and then the, the soft seating area. So I think some of those goals, they have been considered as we, as we've gone through this process. And then, you know, all, as Matt mentioned, we did look at the locker rooms and renovating them, but we're going to be taking areas down for a significant period of time. And it was felt that with this initial amount of capital that you all have, that putting it into these two areas would launch and allow some of these other things to be phased in over the years.
So Kathy, I'm actually glad that you brought up the senior center. I had it in my mind earlier and then it escaped me. To Kathy's point, are we still going to call it a senior center? Are we still going to call it a teen lounge? I think I'd like to challenge us a little bit in even what we're even calling these spaces, because it does put a lot of restriction on who's even going to consider going in them, right? Because I'll tell you, a lot of college students are no longer teens and are really into esports or what have you. You know, so you could, you could use a forever Dublin type of branding instead of a teen lounge or a senior lounge or whatever you want to call it. To me, that feels a little bit more inclusive. And I know that calling it a name is, is maybe a small piece of this, but I think it's something that should be considered because it also sort of changes your mindset about the use of that space and how that space could potentially be used.
So that segues into kind of what I was, I was going to say the same thing. I think we should have a lounge and I think we should have an esports area. The age of the people doing either and either of those things, I don't think really matters. And it's the technology that's necessary for the esports. So I encourage us to look at, yeah, all the spaces in the rec center, make sure we're using the best spaces for those two things, but I am supportive. I don't know I would necessarily, I would, you don't need the, like I said, the teen gathering space with the esports. I just think it needs, esports and lounge are my two suggestions.
Well said, Amy. The esports, it's an emerging cultural thing, and you use the word camaraderie. There are a lot of kids that are socially isolated and they're playing games in their basement all alone. This gives those kids an opportunity to get out of the house and make real friends that they can talk to, touch and feel. So I, I'm supportive of that, and, and I do think the vernacular is important, but I trust the consultants to help us identify the space, space layout and that sort of thing.
Andy, I think you're 100% right about that, I really do. If I hadn't seen it with my own eyes, I don't know that I would have been able to recognize it. But, you know, I watched these kids that I knew to be kids that really did sit in their basements and play video games, get out to these tournaments where there are hundreds of kids. And they're interacting in ways that they've never interacted with other kids before. And I will tell you, it, it completely changed their outlook on things and frankly, you know, some of their personality towards other people in a really important and profound way. So I think, to me, you really hit the nail on the head.
I, I would add at a minimum, you look at where it is in, in the space. You know, that space that as you come through is probably the easiest to get to and, and some of the most desirable. And I, I don't know that it is exactly the kind of space you would want for esports. You know, you'd want to be able to control the light. You know, you might have noise issues, you know, if you were going to do that, I'm not sure that that's where you would put it. You'd have to keep the doors closed all the time because those things tend to get loud and, you know, there's lots of lights associated with and big, you know, the screens don't look as big on these drawings as I would imagine them being, you know, in real life. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's the best spot for it. And I guess at the end of the day, I'm challenging us to say, just because that's where the teen lounge is, doesn't mean that's where the teen lounge has to be. And I agree that nomenclature is important, and, you know, when, whatever refresh would happen is that the nomenclature would be appropriated, the reveal. But just because that's where it is today, I, I don't, to me, that's, we're not married to the location. You know, that, I see the senior lounge is kind of isolated in, in the, which is awkward, right? These are the people that have the most difficulty navigating the spaces, and so why wouldn't we put the space with the least amount of difficulty for the person who has the most physical challenges to get there? So I.
I, I think all this conversation is, is, is well taken. I, you know, one of the things that we practice when we do community centers is that they are multi-generational. So it's everything from, if you have childcare in a facility, so it's everything from two and three years of age all the way up to spectrum. And the more that you can bring all those age groups together and socialize and interact, I love the conversation about, you know, the, calling it esports in the lounge, because then that might get the seniors over in that esports area to interact with our teens, and we all know that there's value in that. That's a teaching opportunity, as well as them connecting with their, you know, their own age groups and everything. So I think this is all, you know, conversation that's well taken, and as, as we proceed, we'll, we'll continue to embellish that and push that forward.
Yeah, and I do think that Chris's point is well taken. I think you take a look at the space, the whole space, and, and, and just, again, to reiterate her point, just because the senior lounge is where it is today and the teen lounge is where it is today, doesn't mean that you can't swap things up. You know, take a look at some of the rooms, the spaces upstairs, and, and really think critically about what would make the most sense for the spaces that we're talking about. I think that would be fantastic. I'd love to see that out of the box thinking.
The only other comments I would have is that I, to me, the objective, and I, I love the conversation here, the objective is this intergenerational opportunity. But it wasn't mentioned, and I don't know through our community outreach engagement, whether or not you have had the opportunity to talk with the seniors about maybe, or, you know, what they're looking for, and the teens, too, I think, to have them participate in giving you ideas for design, I think, are really, really important. And I love the idea, and it was mentioned on here and we have the opportunity, and this is where the demonstration kitchen might be a great add to any of these spaces, because that is very intergenerational and it's an opportunity to, to, to bring a new element into the, into the rec center. The other question I would have is that I know some of those rooms are used for family activities in the evenings, so I didn't hear too much conversation about these spaces being able to be used, you know, if it's intergenerational, could families use these sorts of things? And what is it that, that they might need when it comes to? I know our Indian community meets once a week there with their families, talking about making crafts, doing things for the community. So that, that's another, another aspect I don't know that we've thought about.
Yeah, just to keep rolling with this intergenerational concept and idea, that's exactly the conversations that we have been having. If you think of the senior schedules, they're usually out at 10 o'clock, go back home at 3:00. Other people that are younger, maybe still working, get off of work, taking kids to the rec center, wanting to drop them off, having a place to relax, hang out, do something fun with others, meet up with others. We can have other small programs going on that people of multiple generations can, can participate in during the hours that the seniors aren't there. And I think that's really what we're trying to aim for, is that, that, the room, the way it is today, it's really not inviting for yoga classes or wine tastings or entertainment, speakers, you know, those kinds of things, that you can have a little bit more of an intimate setting rather than the community hall, which is wide open. So those conversations we have had, and certainly we're hearing you loud and clear, will continue down that road.
I'd even think about the possibility of incorporating music, whether there's a piano in there or something where people could have a performance in an evening together and that sort of thing, so.
The last comment I'll make is, you know, when you start doing construction, there are lots of economies to scale when you start pouring foundations and things like that. And this is a very small addition. And so, you know, I wonder what our cost per square foot on this size of an addition might be versus if it were put somewhere else, you know, and we could make it larger and there might be a much greater economy to scale. And could we get a lot more if we, if we, you know, didn't feel like we had to put it right here? And then we were going to spend that money somewhere else, what that might, might look like? I just, it's a very small addition and your cost per square foot, I'm going to guess it's probably less than 3,000 square feet.
This is talking about covering the patio, right? Well, I mean, why aren't we not just keeping it a patio and making it a fantastic? I, I mean, if you swap the two spaces for what happens, I, I think you get a very different, interesting conversation. So I'm not really quite sure why we're doing that.
And could there be other things? Could it be a glass enclosure where, you know, maybe you could have some gardening, you know, gardening kind of activity, or it could be, you know, just something else? To say all that is I don't know the solution, but I do know that there are economies to scale of additions onto buildings. And this small of an addition is probably about, per square foot is about expensive as it could possibly be per square foot versus if we looked at it, putting it somewhere else.
If you notice by the pictures, there's an existing wall out there, there's an existing footing, there's an existing foundation. So I, we're, we're going to be able to utilize at least the footing. I don't know about the foundation, but we're going to be able to utilize the footing. So it is a, it is a pretty economical place to put this addition onto it. And if the addition gets larger, I agree with you on the economies of scale, you're, you're going to add cost to the project, obviously. So it's finding that sweet spot, you know, with that, and I'm not sure, growing it, we're going to see a lot of growth in that out of the economies for scale, because we'll have to go over, we just did an addition elsewhere, we're going to have to trench and put new footings in, we're going to have to, you know, do site clearing and all that. In this case, we really don't have to do that. We're, we're basically dropping a roof in there. It's a little more complicated than that, but there is, we're taking advantage of what's there as best we can.
And I would suggest, too, as, as we went about this, we, we looked at several different scenarios. It's why we surveyed the community. We did make sure that we included the, the teen area within that survey in the Phase One area, and then the, in the, the elements that were not in the Phase One area and the future phase areas. As we looked at this, we looked at the locker room, we looked at the pool decking, we looked at several different places that we could improve. At the end of the day, given the, the budget we have right now, we're bringing this forward because we felt that these were areas that could be accomplished without significant amount of disruption to current operations. Once we start, the main halls would, we absolutely understand that those need to be done, the bathrooms need to be done. Once we start those, we want to make sure there's continuity within the building. We don't want, we, we don't want a certain spot in the main hall looking really good while another spot looks poorly while we phase it a different way. That was the logic behind the proposal that we were bringing forward. In terms of expanding the teen lounge, certainly we can look at different areas. Certainly, as we looked at that front area, it, it seemed to us that we could separate the front area with the current patio to provide that privacy, to provide the lighting and the different elements that are so essential to a successful esports area. And we felt that that space would work similar to the, to the senior lounge. The other thing I would say, too, is we are right there in terms of ensuring that we are going to be, if not rebranding, re-looking at the way that we make sure that multiple generations, and it's a multi-space use. Certainly, and, and, so we went back and forth on calling it the teen lounge, the teen area for the purposes of this presentation, because in our mind, esports, for instance, is, is not necessarily, it might be most popular among a certain age demographic, but it's not necessarily stuck to that age demographic, and everybody would be welcome. Same with the senior lounge, we'd want, and I'm saying senior lounge again, but the senior area, we would want to make sure that, that the seniors are served in that area, that there's programming, that there's improvements in programming, but that does not mean it would be specific to the senior area. So our goal was to try to use the budget that we had to do some improvements now that made sense within the context of a phased approach that was going to need to be much larger. We can certainly re, come at that with a different approach and, and take a more holistic approach to everything and, and taking a holistic approach to how each of the spaces is used. But that is the thought process that we went through in bringing forward this proposal.
Well, you've gotten a lot of feedback here this evening. I, I sense that we definitely want to see the track replaced, the surface of the track replaced. And I would like to get an opinion, our direction for them about these spaces that are still a little bit in flux. The esports inside that particular front room, if that's where it would go, would that preclude other uses? In other words, there's a lot of noise, you'd have to mark it, you'd have, would you have to block it off because of that activity? Would the other spaces actually be able to be used at the same time? There's a lot of questions here. So I don't, I, I'm getting the sense that there's a little bit more information that's needed on at least that lower space. And I think, too, the upper space, is that what I'm sensing?
Yeah, I think that, I think the challenge, so let me, let me try to answer the questions. We can, everyone can answer the questions if they want to. You know, as far as regarding Phase One, to me, it seems that you've taken the, the top items from feedback that you've received from the community and tried to address them in a way that it makes sense financially and budget-wise and disruption-wise. So I'm, I'm very fine with that. Feedback regarding the conceptual design of the senior and teen areas, I think I've given you a lot. I think I, I would also challenge you to take a look at the whole building and see if it makes sense to maybe judge some areas here versus there. Not that you have to, this may be the best space, but I, I feel like you need to give yourselves permission to look at the whole space in a way that is maybe a little more creative or out of the box than you maybe thought you had space to, to think it through. But, but otherwise, I think that the direction that you're heading from a, a facility's perspective makes a lot of sense to me. And then as far as future planning for updates to the DRCRC, I think you, you use that same approach, what makes sense from a budgetary perspective, what makes sense from a visual perspective, from a usage perspective, and, and to, you know, create disruptions that are as small as possible. Obviously, there's some things that are just going to take some time, you know? And then certainly, engagement with the community and communication with the community often and a lot, so.
Thank you, Christina. I think that if you, you have a timeline here, you would be able to bring back some ideas concerning the teen and the senior area to council before you begin. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes, we can, we can take a look at, given the feedback that we're hearing, if, if that's the direction of the council, we can certainly go back and, and take a look at other areas and, and a different approach holistically within the, the facility, if that's the direction of the council.
It looks like, I, I believe that it is unless I hear otherwise.
The only thing, there was also the fitness equipment replacement, and that could proceed as well. So I'm looking at your list here, and, and none of us really talked about the outdoor I don't know how to respond to that. I mean, we have a little bit of an outdoor gym across the way. I know it's fairly long in the tooth, I guess, but I don't see it used very much. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to respond to that. Was an outdoor workspace on the survey?
Yes, it was. It was, I'm looking, it's one, two, three, four over. And, and some of this can get to be something of a chicken and egg scenario where if you don't have a good space, people won't come to use it, and you need to invest in a good space to get people to use it. We feel confident in that space, given the community feedback that we're looking at, that, and, and frankly, our, our staff's day-to-day interaction with our patrons and the desire for the program, and the, the patrons express that that will be a well-used area.
So from my perspective, those first three items, I'd be good to. So from my perspective, those first three items, I'd be good to proceed and then maybe come back with some rethinking and maybe help us envision, vision maybe what your next phase is so we could see how that works together. So I would say proceed with the first couple. That would be my perspective. And then.
Just, I'll just comment real quick. I'm a fan of the outdoor space. There's equipment that you have now that you really can't use in the facilities that we have. And I've been kind of surprised, the current outdoor space is very limited. It's by the art barn. How often it's used? You know, it's, it's sort of out of sight, out of mind. And yet, when, when I'm around there, which isn't that often typically during the Irish Festival, there's a lot of activity there, people doing like full body workouts at that, at that thing. And I'm pretty, pretty impressed by that. So I'm all for that outdoor space. I think it opens the door to some things that we don't have now. It would appeal to a different member type. And it's, it's pretty sophisticated and comprehensive. And it, it's an outdoor space, so it's not taking up any space inside, which is, as we've already talked about, sacred and very limited. I guess I would make a quick comment about the locations of the teen lounge. My understanding is you're looking to basically put it where it already is. It's, so I guess my argument would be, has it been in the wrong place all along? And why reinvent the wheel? So I'm supportive of whatever the consultant recommends and however far down the road you, you gentlemen have gone, I'm supportive of, of that.
All right. I think you have. Any other questions, Matt? Do you have any other questions? Do you feel like you have a good direction now, understanding that the outdoor space, the track will go forward?
Yeah, we, we appreciate the, the feedback this evening. We will proceed with those three items as soon as possible. In light of the feedback this evening and where we are in the year, it might make sense to consider those other couple spaces. I'm hearing you want a more comprehensive look at the overall arrangement of things in the recreation center. So it might make sense to have that larger conversation as part of the upcoming CIP process.
Okay.
Because we'll be underway in just a couple of months at this point.
Right. And the third one is the indoor equipment. Wanted to make sure we have that. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda is the request to refer the I-270 US-33 interchange planning bed renovation to the Community Development Committee. And Matt's going to inform us of that.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of council. You'll recall the interchange of I-270 US-33 was Lance, the, the plantings for that landscape was installed in 2016. It, it, it had a variety of low-rise plant material, much of which we struggled to keep it from basically drowning in the water that wouldn't, would not percolate through the soil. We tried some alternatives to that with some wildflower mix, but still, over time, we still just didn't achieve what that vision was for that gateway feature coming into Dublin. So we took another look at this as part of our Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Budget. We, we came up with a proposed new landscaping concept. This, this design is with species that are more tolerant to the slow water percolation rates and better match for the dimensions of the space. Also, the installation of French drains are to be strategically installed to help mitigate the water issues. You can see the landscape plan or landscape concept plantings there. What that does from a three-dimensional rendering, it provides a whole new three-dimensional approach to that gateway with some towering treetops, with some lower, smaller trees, and giving you a multiple dimensional approach towards what people will see when they enter into the gateway through this, this feature. This is just another angle of that. And you can see that the colors, the heights and the textures will be much more prominent for this gateway feature. It will still include some of the grasses and smaller things that are successful out there. This is just an additional concept that we're taking a look at now. So with this being such a high-profile landscape area, we certainly want to make sure we take the time to discuss all of the details. So staff is recommending that city council will refer this project to, of the planting bed renovation to the Community Development Committee for further discussion. And final recommendation to city council.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel, do you have any other questions for Matt concerning this? None? All right. Then I will move to refer the I-270 US-33 interchange planning bed renovation to the Community Development Committee for the further discussion. May I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, please call roll.
Mr. Reiner, Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt. Staff comments this evening from City Manager Megan O'Callaghan.
Good evening again. Staff is working with design for the first year of the waterways maintenance project. And this project will stabilize banks of various city-maintained waterways. MH&amp;T will be conducting a muscle relocation survey in the North Fork Indian Run in three areas north of Rand and east of Bristol Parkway. Muscle survey notification letters will be sent to affected property owners on Tuesday, May 23. And muscle surveying work will begin on or after Thursday, June 1. So we wanted to make council and the public aware of those activities. As we head into Memorial Day weekend, I'd like to remind city council and the community about the annual Memorial Day ceremony. The City of Dublin and the Wesley G. Davids Dublin Post 800 of the American Legion would be honored to have you, your family and your friends join us on Monday, May 29 to commemorate the honorable men and women who lost their lives in service to our country. The event begins with a procession through historic Dublin with a wreath throwing ceremony at the Bridge Street Bridge, followed by the ceremony at the Dublin Cemetery. As council well knows, Dublin, Ohio, USA is preparing to host the world's best golf at Muirfield Village Golf Club. The memorial tournament presented by Workday runs May 29 through June 4. And we have staff is very busy working with the tournament staff and team and our other community partners to ensure this year's tournament is safe, memorable and fun. Our crews are also busy making sure that the city looks beautiful as we prepare to be on that national global stage. We look forward to seeing members of council in our community at the tournament and the many events around town throughout the week in support of the tournament. And last but not least, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Director of Administrative Services Homer Rogers, as this is his last city council meeting before his retirement later this month on Wednesday, May 31. Homer has been with the city for eight years and he has served in a couple of different roles, including Assistant City Manager, and he's managed many divisions ranging from information technology to innovation and performance analytics and human resources. He was an integral part of leading the development of our strategic framework and many of our governing policies and procedures that we're all working under. Before joining the city, Homer retired from a distinguished military career. So this is his second career. And I would like to thank Homer for his outstanding service to the city as well as the country and wish him the best in his retirement. There will be a reception in Homer's honor on Tuesday, May 30, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Service Center. Council members are cordially invited to attend that ceremony or reception. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Next is our council reports. Our committee report, Finance Committee.
Thank you. So at our last Finance Committee meeting, we discussed the process and evaluation of the hotel motel tax grant applications. And that was at our May meeting. So the, the goal of that discussion was to really understand how the hotel motel bed tax is used to support the community through events and programs that enhance the resident and visitor experience in Dublin. So we talked about the need to ensure that priority is based on events and projects that enhance several things, the quality of life, support the hotel motel tax fund itself, and further Dublin's social and cultural resiliency goals, and demonstrate an ability to be self-sustaining through an objective process. So staff did an excellent job. I have to hand it to them in preparing and presenting several different options for application evaluation and then administering the program itself. So we talked about a potential scoring system that would evaluate sports tournaments and what we're calling community benefit events together and one that would score them separately. So we, as a committee, also discussed the concept of allocating all or a portion of the budgeted grant funds to the Dublin Community Improvement Corporation, Dublin Arts Council and/or Visit Dublin, Ohio, to administer the re-grant funds. The committee wanted to get a better idea of the impact of these evaluations, which is hard to do without having the information. So we did ask staff to run basically a parallel process and would see how, so we could see how they would play out at the same time over the next couple of years before making a recommendation to city council regarding adoption of a formal policy, which is the end goal. So staff is going to request the information necessary from applicants this year to further inform the committee's consideration of the evaluation criteria moving forward. So we're going to really test the stuff that we put together as a committee that staff brought to us. The award process will be consistent this year with the administrative approval process, along with staff forwarding requests to the Finance Committee for review and recommendation to city council. Staff will also provide the committee with sample evaluations utilizing both processes, the one where they're evaluated separately versus together, to inform the committee's recommendation. The committee is interested in exploring running the grant through the community partners in the future, but would like to test and determine the appropriate objective evaluation system before passing it off to the CIC. We will also, we also began a discussion on inflationary impacts to the cost recovery policy, and we'll have more information at our next meeting. I don't know. Any questions? Let me know.
All right. Thank you. Public Services Committee.
Public Services Committee met last week and we had our second discussion around park usage policies, particularly at Riverside Crossing and the South Fields of Kaufman Park. And I think we've come to a consensus and so of a recommendation that all of council will be reading regarding a few changes to those areas. We also discussed a new concept of fees associated with outdoor activities within our parks. So staff is working on those changes and we'll, all of council will see it shortly.
Right. Thank you, Amy. Next is Liaison Reports. Some, some of you have them and some of you don't, but I'll call them out anyway. Dublin Board of Education, seen we have anything?
We don't have anything, Stacey.
All right. Vice Mayor DeRosa, Dublin Bridges, US-33 Quarter Group and Envision Dublin.
No.
All right. Andy, Logan Union County and US-33.
Logan Union Champagne Meeting on May 11. Jerome Village Market was approved. It's a mixed-use grocery and retail location off Route 42 between Highland Croix and Jerome Road. Other than that, there wasn't a whole lot of activity.
John, Dublin Arts Council and Veterans Committee.
Yeah, we're going to, the Dublin Arts are going to finish up Factuals, A Pattern in Nature here on June the 2. And then we're bringing in Nicholas Hill, The Pandemic Portraits, June 13 through July 21. If you wondered who the bands were for the fall Toyota Park concerts, it's Reganomics, Pop Gun, North to Nashville, and the ever-loved British Invasion. So that's the entertainment lineup for the fall. All of them have a really good following. Want to thank you, Homer, for your service through our city and our country. And thank you, Megan, for covering what's going on with Memorial Day coming up. And don't forget the wonderful picnic that the city throws after the ceremony. So really well done. So thank you.
Amy, Washington Township and Architectural Review Board.
So the Washington Township meeting on May 9 was canceled, but I will be attending tomorrow's meeting. So I'll have a, if anything happens, I'll have an update at our next meeting. And then today we had our agenda meeting for this Thursday's Architecture Review Board. Pretty light agenda, but ARB is looking forward to staff presenting an overview of our work session from last week.
Thank you. Chris, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning and Planning and Zoning and Envision Dublin.
Yes. So the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, we did have our meeting on May 11. And we hosted Dr. Sherman, who is retiring from Ohio University. And it was really a fantastic time of being able to honor him and hear some of the vision for the future of that university and really appreciate his work in that space. Certainly was exceptional. So the other thing relative to the, to MORPC is the monitoring of House Bill 64 and work, trying to build consensus. That certainly would be a very negatively impactful legislation for communities like ours and many of MORPC member communities that are committed to multi-use transportation opportunities. So I suspect that we will perhaps be offering some opponent testimony, if not certainly written opposition to that legislation. So it's kind of happening sort of fast, but I will keep you posted as best we can. I've been in communication with Megan about that. So I don't know if you have wanted to add anything to that.
Oops, sorry. Excuse me. Yes, we actually did some mid-opposition testimony this morning. The deadline for that testimony was 10 o'clock, I believe, or 11 o'clock. So we had to act rather quickly. And I'll be sharing that later on this evening.
Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Association also put together a letter and they got it out before the presentation this morning.
As did OML and quite a few other organizations as well.
Right.
So, you know, I would imagine that all of those organizations speaking with one voice would be rather powerful. And we will wait and see when those hearings come, if they have additional opponent testimony in person, and, and how that navigates through that committee process. So certainly be keeping an eye on that. The Planning and Zoning Commission, we did not have an agenda meeting. The, the last meeting, they're going through some code updates. You know, their agenda in terms of applications have been pretty light. Their workload has been significantly heavier because they're working through code issues and, and some of those things. But certainly they're getting ramped up for community plan update and any code changes that will happen there. And in, as far as Envision Dublin goes, I don't have any updates to share.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Roundtable. Amy, would you like to start?
Sure. On the, on May 10, I attended ribbon cutting. We have a new veterinarian emergency group, which is a 24/7 vet clinic here in our city. It's at 3800 Tuller Road, right along Somme Road, the old Bank One Building. Excellent facility. And again, 24/7. So that, that was kind of fun. And the rain and weather did not cooperate with us last Friday when both for the police memorial, but we ended up moving it inside. It ended up being a nice service. And our dodgeball tournament as well, the schools had to cancel after we all got nice and wet in the rain for, what, good half hour or so. But we got our picture with the trophy and we didn't lose any games.
I'd just like to thank Homer for a service to the city and the country.
I just want to remind you that tomorrow night is the Community Development Committee at 5:00 PM. See you there.
Thanks. Thank you, Homer, for everything, for all your service. And I just wanted to call out a special congratulations to all the high school and college graduates out there. This is the class that graduated fully having, you know, had to embrace the results from COVID. So it's a pretty big accomplishment for all of them and their parents, by the way. So congratulations to all of them and all their families.
Homer, thank you for your service. Thank you for your attention to detail. And thank you for your steady hand and your patience. Much appreciated. Mitch, thank you for making sure that our headband game was strong. Maybe it was the, the, oh, sorry. I'm maybe a missing, apparently I'm giving credit to the wrong person. But, you know, we are, we didn't get to put our dodgeball skills on display, but we did have a strong headband game. So thank you for coming out after hours and joining us and what was. So thank you for coming out after hours and joining us in what was sure to be a much celebrated victory, but we will postpone that for a year.
Homer, congratulations. Enjoy the next phase. I guess that motorcycle's going to see some miles, right? Yes, congratulations and enjoy, and thank you for all you've done.
Well, I'll add to that. You always manage to make some of the most complex things concise and simple for us, and we really appreciate it. You've given so much service to this city. We really appreciate it. We hope that you have a wonderful retirement and you have great times on the road. So know how much we appreciate you. Very appreciative. A couple of things on, I also want to thank our public work staff and all of our staff, and especially want to thank Jenny Roush for coming out Saturday morning to have conversation with historic district residents. About 40 people showed up to look over some of the recommendations and to understand that very well, and I really appreciate Jenny doing that, especially on short notice. I did have a question about Envision Dublin. I saw in the, as I looked on the website, the first six months, I'm just looking at an update on the communication materials for the community to understand how they can participate. I know that we have this wonderful Envision Dublin website. I'm not sure people are moving towards it. I don't know how many surveys. I'd be curious to know how many surveys came back, how many people are actually going to the links to the map. Because the first six months, it says on the site that the vision will be identified and then confirmed by the council steering committee, or by the steering committee and by council. That started a few months back, and since that's when the vision is being formed, it would be helpful to know where we are in the community engagement process, because I think this is our six-month period for that. And maybe sandwich boards, or maybe, I'm not sure exactly what the communication is, but I think it's really important that we get as much feedback as we can in this first six months. So I would appreciate getting a little more information about that. So other than that, I have nothing else, and I hope you all have a very nice evening. So this meeting is adjourned.